The fear is real. Pennhurst Asylum is back for another terrifying Halloween season. Tickets and dates are limited, so reserve your time now at pennhurstasylum.com before your time runs out. Featured on Ghost Adventures as one of the most haunted places in America. Buy a VIP ticket and go straight to the front of the line. Open Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays through November 6th. The fear is real.
Villanova's College of Professional Studies believes you are who you've been. In fact, we're counting on it. Maybe you've had big ambitions since you can remember, or a degree's always been on your bucket list. Whatever your reason for returning to school, we offer rigorous programs that balance life commitments with life ambitions. Because here, transformation has no age limit. Villanova's College of Professional Studies. Pursue the next you.
Simone Biles and teammates star in "Athletic Presents: Gold Over America Tour." Simone, Jordan, Grace, Jade, and Michaela. Friday, November 5th, Wells Fargo Center. Tickets are on sale now at wellsfargocenterphilly.com.
Unleash your demons at CIN AC. Showboat Hotel throwing the largest, most spectacular adult Halloween party on the East Coast. CIN AC, Saturday, October 30th, from 10:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. Four of the hottest DJs, celebrities, ghouls, and best costume takes home $1,000,000. Info at cinacityac.com.
The powerful new iPhone 13 Pro is here with the most advanced camera in an iPhone, and T-Mobile is the place to get it.
This new cinematic mode turn my travel videos into a filmmaking masterpiece.
Get the most out of your new iPhone on America's largest, fastest 5G network.
You guys ready? Are you ready down there?
Yes.
You guys ready? Good evening and welcome to the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors Meeting for October 27th, 2021. First of all, I'd like to say it's glad, I'm glad to be back from my extended visit to Costa Rica. It was very nice time. But, um, all kidding aside, every meeting I, I say something in regards to remembering certain people. And I like to do that tonight because it has a special meaning to me. I'm sorry. I like for us to remember all those who have been affected by this horrible virus and their families. And those on the front line, very important people to me. The doctors, nurses, EMTs, police, the fire, all who answered their call to duty unselfishly. And I could attest for that because I was one of the ones they answered the call to. And those everyday important essential workers, the garbage collectors, supermarket workers, food servers, just to name a few. And here in our township, our management, our administrative staff, public works, together they all keep our township running. Let us support local businesses the best we can, and please, don't forget to be generous. Most of all, treat, treat people with respect and kindness, even those you may disagree with. As we start to come out of this, whatever you want to call it pandemic, I don't know what it's called anymore, together as a community, we will be stronger when this is over. And I just have to say, there's no one out there that is a non-essential worker. Everybody is important, um, and we should treat them with, as with importance. I'm sorry to get emotional, but I say this every meeting, and this is the first time it really hits my heart. And, um, we are in a serious situation, and I'm not telling people what to do, except be careful and be safe. If we all can bow our heads right now. If we could stand with the board for pledge legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lewis, any changes or additions to the agenda tonight?
There is one change, Mr. Chairman. Item 12A2 and 3 under the Engineers Report related to the Liquid Fuels Program have been removed from the agenda.
Okay, thank you. No special actions tonight. We'll go into our first session of public comment. Anyone who wants to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda right now, please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none. Anyone? Oh, sure.
Good evening. Jan Filios, I'm sorry. Jan Filios from Trumbull Court in Newtown. And Mr. Calabro, it's nice to see you back.
Thank you.
Just a couple words in support of LED lighting. I understand that we have an opportunity to have a free feasibility study done by the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. And if we're prompt, we may be able to get in on some further design analysis before the end of the year. So I just urge the supervisors to take advantage of that feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen Snyder, Rumford Court. I, I also want to speak about the LED lighting. We have a free feasibility study on something that's wildly popular with the public and would show in some small way that we are attentive to climate change, as many of our surrounding townships and boroughs already have. So I know you're going to discuss that in some small way at some point, and I urge you to go forward with this study, which is absolutely free. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none. Presentation from Malle LLP, 2020 Audit. Is someone here from Malle?
Hello, everyone. My name's Mike Gentah. I'm a principal at Malle. Don Pierce is with me tonight. He is a partner. We are the township's independent auditors, and tonight we're going to review the 2020 audit financial statement results. We have the audit results from 2020 with some comparisons to prior years, so you'll see some historical data from recent audits. We'll also look at the general fund budget versus actual results, and then at the end we'll wrap up with some of the required communications that us as auditors are required to communicate to the board. Next slide, please. And everyone down there, everyone has a hand up, Micah? Yep, great. The first thing we're going to look at is the township's net position. So when we speak about net position, we're talking about all the township's assets less the township's liabilities. That's how you calculate net position. When you look at government-wide net position, we're talking about, it's the full accrual basis of accounting, so it might be different than what you're used to looking at with the fund financial statements. Full accrual, big differences are your, your capital assets are capitalized onto the balance sheet as an asset, rather than running through as an expenditure in the current year. And then items like long-term debt are liabilities on your balance sheet, rather than being a resource, a finance source revenue in the current year. So it's a little bit like what you're used to seeing in the for-profit world. As you can see with net position, after a few years of decreasing net position, in, in 2020, you went from roughly $32 million up to $33.1 million. Now, this doesn't mean you have $33 million of cash. It's important to note of this net position, 29.2 is what's called your net investment in capital assets. So those are all your fixed assets, less the related debt. So that's a huge chunk of this net position. So it's just one, one indicator to look at when you look at your financial statement results. If you go to the next page, that will have the revenues and expenses and a five-year history there for you to look at. In total, revenues were relatively stable in 2020, while you did see decreases for items like recreation programs. You had increases with transfer taxes. As you can see, the bigger component here in the change is your expenses. You know, expense, expenses appear to be managed well, so we're seeing decreasing expenses of $14.5 million, down to $13.2 in 2020. Go to the next slide, please. This is looking at your general fund budget versus actual results. And again, general fund is probably what you're more used to seeing on the financial statements. That's the difference, fund financial versus government-wide, that I was trying to explain earlier. You'll see revenues of $12.2 million actual compared to budget of roughly $12 million. That's a positive variance of $163,000. Expenditures is where you see the big swing budget was $12.5, actual came in at $11.3. So that was a positive variance to budget of roughly $1,226,000. The end result is a net change in fund balance under general fund, an increase of $477,000, taking your fund balance from roughly $2.1 up to $2.6 million. If we jump to the next, and, and I wanted to mention with the expenses, we did see positive variances within all the different expense functions, expenditure functions. So general government had a positive variance to budget, parks and rec, police, so the positive variance was across the board. Go to the next slide, please. This is a five-year history of your general fund fund balance. You know, as you can see, after a couple of years of decreasing general fund fund balance, you experienced a positive jump in 2020, up to the $2.6 million. One of the things I wanted to mention when we were looking at the budget, I had mentioned before, parks and rec were, you know, recreation programs were down, transfer taxes up. You also had a transfer of $1 million of real estate taxes in mid-2020, I guess April, maybe, where you transferred $1 million from your debt service fund of real estate taxes to the general fund, sorry. So that was a, a part of that positive result in your general fund. The next slide will show your government, governmental fund balances, and this is all of your funds. So general funds in these numbers, as well as, you know, liquid fuels, your transportation, your capital funds, they're all in these numbers. You finished at, with fund balance of $5.1 million, a slight increase from 2019, which $119,000 increase. These are showing the components of your fund balance. So when you see non-spendable, that's a form of fund balance that's not, it's in a form that can't be spent. So for you, this was like a prepaid expense, where it's an asset, but the cash has already been laid out. Restricted fund balance means there's an external constraint on it. For you, I think this is mostly liquid fuels money. Assigned fund balance, assignments can be added by township manager, the board. It basically means there's an intended use for these funds, but it can be, they're not restricted, or they're not committed, so they can be assigned, reassigned through management and the board. And lastly, unassigned is just your residual amount of fund balance. And the next slide is the required communications as auditors. You know, we conduct our audit in accordance with U.S. General, generally accepted auditing standards. We are issuing a, what's known as an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. Our, we, we, if you look into the actual audit report, you'll see an emphasis matter paragraph. That's where we're emphasizing, and we did this last year too with just COVID-19, and because of the significance of it and future unknowns, it's still something we're emphasizing that there's, there's future unknowns that create risk and uncertainties that could affect tax collections, it can affect your rec programs, things like that that you've seen. We, as auditors, we plan and perform our audit to obtain reasonable assurance whether your financial statements are free of material misstatement. So that's really our job when we attack an audit. On the next slide, you'll see that there is no transactions we identified that lacked authoritative guidance. And then I'm going to identify, we have to identify some of the significant estimates. So we're talking about things that there's some judgment involved in, and that's depreciation, your other post-employment benefit liability, your pension liabilities, fair market value of investments, and compensated absence liability. And lastly, I'll just add that there was no difficulties or disagreements with management. We proposed a few audit adjustments to management, management posted them to their box, so no, no issues there. And that's all I had, if there's any questions.
Any questions from the board? I have a question in regards to the general fund balance. Now, in 2020, general fund balance, $2.6 million. Is there a difference in the general fund balance and the ending fund balance that is on our budget?
I don't have your ending budget, you mean, ending budget for?
Because we never ended 2020 with an ending general fund balance of $2.6 million. Where does this number come from? Maybe, maybe Mr. Lewis?
The, the 2.6 you're looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's your, that's your actual fund balance as of 12/31/20 audited, when you take the general fund assets at 12/31/20, less the general fund liabilities at 12/31/20. So it's not necessarily cash.
Right.
But it's assets less liabilities as of that date.
But I'm just, I'm just thinking, could it be misleading when, what was our ending budget, general fund balance last year, 1.4 million, or?
Yeah, it was estimated at 1.4 million.
What, my question to the auditor is why is there a difference between the 1.4 million and you're saying 2.6 million? What wasn't, or what was either derived from, to us as income that wasn't calculated in, or maybe we had expenses that we didn't pay at that particular time? Now, I, I'm going to defer to Mr. Lewis because he does the budget, so maybe he has an answer here.
Yes, so I, I think the two things that, that pop out most were the deferment of the road program and the reassignment of millage to the general fund because of the COVID-19 pandemic onset. I think the other thing was the, the pulling back of expenditures that we did collectively for any nondiscretionary spending through the course of the year to try to offset that. And the, and the other prominent revenue source from last year was the real estate transfer tax. If you recall, I think, I believe it was $1.3 million or something like that, and we had budgeted, I think about $800,000. So that's, that's sort of the difference in a nutshell, without going in line by line.
Okay. So, so technically, I'm, I'm not, not holding you accountable, but technically, when we have, like, for instance, this year, I believe it's 1.63 million, looks like our ending fund balance.
That's correct.
That really isn't written in concrete because we may get a windfall in some, some messes from EIT, transfer tax, or whatever, or maybe a $249,000 check from the borough. So these things could inevitably increase our general fund balance, correct?
That's, yes, absolutely, that's correct.
Okay. That's the only question I, I guess unless any other board members, my, my question is, in your professional opinion, what is the state of Newtown Township?
I mean, I'll let Don chime in if you want. I mean, I'll give an answer, I don't know if they'll, you?
Sure.
The answer I would give is that, you know, we don't really issue an opinion on the overall state and those kind of things without like a separate consulting engagement. Like, we're strictly with the financials, but the, the financials, you know, if there was concerns over, like, fund balance and things like that, you know, we certainly issue recommendations. We have to look at going concern, which is like a, basically, do you have the funds and resources to advance for a year? But I don't know if you want to add anything to?
Well, I think overall, when I look at your financial statements, you have positive net position. One of the slides that Mike showed was positive net, net position on your government-wide statement of net position. I always look at trends, things went up and down too. I think overall, you're, you know, physically healthy. I think your general fund balance, you know, a lot of times, different organizations may put out indicators of what a healthy fund balance is. I think your fund balance, you know, you're always looking to, to maintain, you know, a certain percentage of fund balance relative to your revenues, and I, and I think, you know, you're in line with those percentages.
The fact that general fund expenditures appear to be managed well compared to budget when needed?
Yeah, I think, you know, the fact that your expenses were decreased this year as a result of everything that was going on, and you were able to manage them was a positive. I think the, the fact that your fund balance for the year didn't, you know, deteriorate in the general fund was a positive. The increase in net position was a positive. So comparing it with last year, I think they were all positives overall.
Great. I like to hear that word positive. That's very positive, so thank you for that. I'll assume a clean bill of health is what we have.
Yes, we, we appreciate, you know, all the, the township's efforts and giving us everything that we asked for during the course of the audit. You know, they're always very cooperative, give us anything that we need, you know, never any scope restrictions, and, you know, certainly with the challenges of working remote and everything else in various instances, you know, I appreciate the efforts of all the staff of the township.
Let us see if, I think Dennis may have a question.
I always look for that statement about a clean opinion. Is that like the highest opinion you can give?
Yep. Yeah, that's basically us saying that your financial statements are in accordance with standards. You've implemented all the standards, nothing there.
And you had no disagreements of?
Correct.
Yeah, no disagreements with management.
Yep.
Yeah, overall, I thought the audit was very successful, very positive. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Sanders, do we need a, do we need to approve this audit, or it's just?
No, this is just a predication on it.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you next year, I guess.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have minor approvals, Historic Architectural Review Board, Citizen Bank, Cambridge Lane. Is anyone here from the, from Harb, Mary? Oh?
Yes, correct. Okay, no worries.
We can hear you.
Yes, Donaldson, Vice Chairman of Paul. We continue this application, and recommend that you approve it for me to sign. Hale will explain what the difference is.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Noyne. I'm here on behalf of Citizens. This project is, Citizens is no longer just a bank. They are changing their name just to Citizens, rather than Citizens Bank, because they'll be offering other financial services. All of these signs currently are replacing existing signs, except for the new directional sign, which is located on page 14. There's a new directional sign to show people the exit, drive-up teller, the ATM, and all of the other signs will just be replacing existing.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sanders?
What would our motion be on this?
If the board is in line, Mr. Chairman, the motion would be to approve the application of Citizens Bank for a certificate of appropriateness for new signage at 31 Cambridge Lane, efficient on compliance with the Carter Memorandum of October 13, 2021.
Okay, do I have such a motion? Do I have a second? Do you want to see a second? Any questions from the board on this? Any from the public? Seeing none, I call the question. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Pass is 5-0. And that's it for minor approvals. Moving on to reports of boards, commissions, and committees. I don't see any committee reports. Again, I would just like to emphasize, um, thanks, my personal thanks to the police department, the rescue squad, and so many nurses and nurses assistants and doctors at St. Mary's Hospital, and all important people, that, everyone was important, even the custodian who came in and cleaned my room made me smile every once in a while. Just remember these people because they do a heck of a job, so. And excuse me for getting emotional, I know I don't look like an emotional guy, but some things like this just get to me. So I just wanted to send out that thanks to Newtown Township Police, to the Newtown Township Rescue Squad, and to all those who work and, you know, do, I hate to be religious, but do God's work at St. Mary's Hospital. That's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Chairman, it's good to see you back.
Thank you.
Glad, and I, having experienced leading the, meeting for four or five meetings in a row, I know there's another layer of preparation that's involved, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So glad you're, you're back.
And I just want to say, I did watch you occasionally. You did a fantastic job. I just.
Could, could we possibly have a round of applause?
Yes, absolutely.
That's for each other. Only thing I have to report is, we, last evening, we had a finance committee report, or finance committee meeting. Did a couple of things. I walked them through the budget and how the budget's laid out with revenues and expenses and all the funds, and then the appendices, and then we had put together some questions, which I've sent to the project manager, and when we get to the budget discussion, some of those will, will come up. Also, we have a set of recommendations that some of, that we've given to the township manager, and, and I've discussed here in the meetings before, things like getting a software program for the administration, which is in the budget for next year, and just some suggestions for American relief program funding. And one of those could be hybrid meetings, which we'll, I think, we'll probably talk a little bit more about this evening, and, you know, maybe some, and, and how, how we calculate our revenue loss for the past year in ARP terms. Those are the kind of things we talked about last evening. We do have an open spot on the finance committee. If any of that sounded interesting to anyone, you're welcome to apply.
Excellent. That's it?
Yep.
Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Phil. I also want to welcome you back.
Thank you.
I know I talked to your wife several times while she was at work, trying to catch up on what, how you've been doing, so I'm glad you, a hundred, a thousand percent.
Thank you.
I just wanted to report on the Technology and Communications Committee that met on Monday, the 25th. Most of the time was spent reviewing the analytics that the township provided on our website, reviewing them to see how the website can be improved. They noted a couple of improvements that were already made to the calendar. I think that was proactively done by, uh... I think that was proactively done by, what's her name? The technology person? Beth Leon. I think they appreciated that. Dan Williams, the chair, has a presentation regarding his analysis of the analytics and he would like at some future date to make a presentation to the board of supervisors. Whenever we have time to do that, maybe at a work session. And he also hopes to meet with Ms. Leon to discuss future analytics. The other thing that was discussed were the virtual meetings and they had access to Catherine McGovern's report, thank you very much, from Middletown, how they run hybrid meetings. And I think the opinion was more toward, leaning towards using YouTube and we could discuss that later, maybe under old business. And, but I would ask if the Technology Committee, Mr. Williams, could get access to a couple, at least a couple of the proposals from Video Gold to review what they had to say about this. I know we have, we didn't really discuss them in too much detail, but it might be good to have some other eyes on that.
I don't think that would be a problem. Sure. Everybody okay with that?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have. Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, also, I'd get a little back.
Thank you, sir.
Glad you recovered well.
Thank you.
We have the Newtown Rotary Pels for Progress this Saturday morning, where they collect used bicycles and sewing machines and ship to third-world countries. It's nine to 12 at the parking lot across from old St. Andrews Church. So, and I did find out that bikes are being sent to Guatemala this year. So, this is the 19th year they've been doing it. Also, I have the parking rec report for today. Registered today for the following upcoming programs starting soon. Schools art, schools art workshop, adult drawing and sketching, savvy social security planning, and adult slow-flow yoga. And again, follow us on social media for updates from programs and whatnot. Oh, you want to read this out?
No, please do.
Certainly. We have Newtown Township Holiday Parade, which is this.
Halloween.
Halloween Parade, Thursday, October 28th at 1:00 PM at the Newtown Township Administration Building for ages three to eight. Sponsored by Newtown Business Commons. Come take your little monsters and goblins, princesses and pirates around the township complex for a Halloween parade. We'll visit the police, emergency services, public works, administration, codes and zoning, parks and rec, and the tax office. While on our parade, we'll be trick-or-treating, so bring a bag for your goodies. This is a township event. Non-resident spots will be limited. It is free, but pre-registration is required. Again, that will be on our Newtown Park and Rec website. Thank you. Let me just make sure I don't miss anything on this sheet. Save the date for e-recycling event, scheduled for Saturday, November 6th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Visit Facebook page again for details. Also, our annual holiday bazaar and craft fair will take place Saturday, November 20th, 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Again, visit Facebook for details. And don't forget, pre-registration is required for all parks and rec programs. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I think in regards to the Halloween festivities, we're probably going to scour the kids by visiting the tax, tax department, but not that they aren't nice people, it's just.
Candy's candy.
It's just that word, tax. Mr. Oxley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to see you back in your spot.
Thank you, sir.
It wasn't the same without you, I have to say, although Mr. Fisher did a wonderful job. I have to say, we did miss your, your energy and your overall just presence here. So, good to have you back, as said.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Economic Development Committee's meeting was canceled last week. We did have a quorum and so we'll, we'll move on to the next meeting schedule. But on Saturday, I participated in Legislative Day for Bucks County Chapter Jack and Jill, which is an organization of African-American children that, was a mother's organization that kind of just helps facilitate different types of workshops for their children from different parts of Bucks County, whether it's up in Shawafon, New Hope, Yardley, and all to get together and just talk about different discussions, different topics. So, it was pretty cool. Highlighted the HBCU of the, of the month, which was cool if some of you don't know what HBCU is, it's Historically Black College University. And what we also did was basically talk about what is important in terms of our government, the different branches of it. Senators, Senator Sinisera was here, Representative Warren. We actually had the kids participate in making a bill. We had a governor up here, we had lieutenant governor over here, and we just went through that exercise of voting on if Halloween should be on, at the end of the month, or should it, as it always is, or should it be on a specific date in October? And the kids had to vote on it. So, that was pretty nice. They also did another bill, then they had figured out how to vote on it and then put it to the governor to, for either veto or to be passed. And then another bill was around if a giraffe should be able to be out in public or not. So, there was a lot of discussion around why and what people, the kids thought about it. So, we just wanted to go through the exercises, show kids and our youth how their voice matters, representation matters, so, and hopefully we encourage some young people to be future leaders. So, that was on Saturday. And then on Sunday, I went to the Newtown Friends Meeting House and participated in a discussion around racial injustice and what we can do more in the community to encourage others to, you know, participate in conversations and figure out, bridge gaps and figure out what we can do to make our community more inclusive. So, those were the events that I participated in and that's all I have for my report, but thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. I guess we'll go right to reports of officials. Engineers' report.
Thank you. I am evaluating the town's life and the Tenda Multimodal Transportation Fund grant resolutions. We provided a draft of the application to the township for review, which would be for the Business Commons Sidewalk Connections Project. The goal here is to fill in some sidewalk gaps that exist within the township. Everything that we put in here is consistent with the township's comprehensive plan that was adopted a few years ago, so we, we worked with, within the recommendations, you know, of that prior report. One item that was missing from the, not missing from the application, we haven't received it yet, was the approval from the Bucks County Planning Commission. We've since received that, so we'll be including that with the application as required. So, tonight, we are seeking approval of the resolution authorizing that grant application. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Now, the grant of $873,000, that can only be used for sidewalk repair?
It will be used in this project for the construction of new sidewalks and all associated improvements, you know, along with that. So, also ADA curbs, improvements to intersections, and the necessary stormwater management that will go along with, with the sidewalk construction. That would apply, yep. And, you know, one, if we get into that further design, that'll, you know, dictate how that works, but, you know, typically, you know, there's, you know, inlets, piping and things that are associated with that, so.
But nothing to do with the road.
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this? Okay, motion in second. Second. Any, any questions from the board in regards to this?
I have a couple of questions. I was glad to see other areas sidewalks in the plan. There was one particular little piece of sidewalk, though, Lower Doolington and above where the trail is going by, it looked to me like another sidewalk that just ended nowhere. Why was that in the, that little piece in the, up there at the end of that Lower Doolington Trail?
Right there, there's, our, the proposed trail is focused on the other side of the road, so where it exists now on the other side near Yorkshire Drive, there's an existing sidewalk gap. So, the goal here is to fill that gap on that side of the road.
Okay. I just, I guess I couldn't read it correctly. So, matching funds will come from a capital fund? Which fund do we have for that?
I can take that. The, the matching funds, which is 30% of the total, will come from the rec capital plan. So, I talked to our solicitor and we bounced back and forth because sidewalk connections are specifically spelled out in the township's recreation plan. It's 21 years old, but that's another thing. It's, it's spelled out in there. It's eligible for recreation capital funds to support these types of projects.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I have a motion in second. Seeing none, a call to question, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, Leanna.
I have another question for Leanna, if I can.
Sure.
It, it involves the LED lights. I know you, you got, you were in communication with Liz Compatello at the VRPC. Thank you very much for expediting that contact and I think we received from them this letter of intent, which says that we would like to do a feasibility study and that's completely without any strings attached, no money is involved in that. Is that correct?
Correct. That's based on my understanding and my discussion with her, yes. That's, that's what that is.
And it doesn't bind us to move ahead to the second, next phase of this. That would be something we would have to take up after we see the feasibility study.
Correct.
So, you know, I would like to make a motion that we sign this letter of intent, but we have a motion already on the floor, so I'll wait for that.
No, we can't.
Oh, sorry. Then I make that motion. The letter of intent, if we could sign that so we can get this feasibility study done at no cost to us and with no strings attached regarding acceptance into the program at a later date.
Much effective. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I think, I think we need to, I'm sorry, but I think we need to amend the agenda to add this to the agenda. Am I correct, Mr. Solicitor?
Correct. Well, that's all of business. We can put it under all business. Well, but if you're going to make a motion under old business, it means specific, motion is not set, not text of the motion, but the fact that you are going to consider a motion is not on the agenda under the new state act, Sunshine Act amended. You've got to first take a vote to amend the agenda and if that vote passes, then you have to give the reasons why the matter which you're bringing up was not on the agenda. That reason or reasons has to be recorded in the minutes and then you can vote on the amended item. Tomorrow, an amended agenda has to be posted, including that motion on the website and also posted at the township building.
When will this letter of intent be ready for signing?
It's not going to happen tomorrow, correct? Can't wait till the next meeting?
Can't, can't wait till the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm saying, can, can we just wait till the next meeting and officially put it on the agenda? I mean, I don't think another two weeks are, are going to matter that much.
I hope not, but, you know, as long as it's not, it's not a little motion. Well, there is a deadline to get into the program if we decide to do that, but usually they said all the applications are taken in in December, and I don't know how long this feasibility study takes to do, but.
Well, our next meeting will be November 10th, correct? I mean, we still have plenty of time, but why don't we officially put it on the agenda? Get it, get the proper motion, get it through and, I mean, we should have plenty of time to get it, get the application in.
Okay, well, if that's what the consensus of the board is, that's fine.
So, I, so I just need a reversal of this particular?
Yeah, if we link up the motion, we can, we can draw the motion, I think that procedure will be adopted.
All right, then I would withdraw my motion.
Okay, excellent.
We'll put it on the next meeting.
Yes, it'll be on the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Solicitors' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one item on the Solicitors' Report this evening is a new ordinance, an amendment to the Code of Ordinances. This is a draft amendment, it has not been advertised, yours before the board for action tonight. However, I was asked to put the ordinance that was received by the, from the Environmental Advisory Committee into proper township ordinance form, which I did, it was in your packets. And if the board is of a mind, it would require a motion to authorize our office to advertise that ordinance for consideration at the November 10 meeting.
Okay, do I have such a motion?
So, me.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. And again, this is, this is the preliminary actually function, we're going to advertise this and then at the next meeting discuss on passing it, correct, Mr. Sanders?
Correct. It will be advertised for consideration to enact ordinance at the next meeting, yes.
Gotcha.
And certainly discussion now or discussion then is appropriate.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on this, this ordinance?
I do have another bit of questioning or discussion. I, I, I like it, I mean, I'm generally in support of it. I'm not sure if I like the penalty and how that will be enforced. I mean, I, I don't know that I want someone deciding I have weeds that are noxious and I don't know if I'd know if I had noxious weeds. So, and then getting a fine of $250 or more. So, I wonder what the next, I mean, other than putting on, advertising it and having it on the agenda for the next meeting, is there, is there something that happens after that? I mean, this is not something that goes to the jointure or anything.
Correct. This does not go to the jointure. This is a township standalone ordinance and I'm actually looking right now at the ordinance that was amended.
I have a question. How, I wrote, last meeting, I don't know if everybody understood me, but you have these weeds, right, and they're on property or common ground? Do you, if they're on common ground inside of an association, what happens then? You find the association? Like, I mean, I don't, I don't understand how we enforce this, you know, and how do we, you know, determine what the actual weed from not being the weed? And I'm just concerned about, we should probably, don't you think there should be like a governance through like associations where a town of a bunch of neighborhoods? I'm just open it up for discussion.
And spiritually, it's made, I mean, that I had it.
Yeah. Who, who's, who's going to do the enforcement? Who's going to do the walking around and checking for weeds?
Well, I don't, I don't know that anyone is going to walk around and check for weeds. I don't think the township has enough folks in the position to do that. What generally happens is the township, township gets a phone call complaining about weeds, at which time they would send somebody out to inspect and determine whether there's a violation of the ordinance. There's a provision for notice in here. In other words, if you have, if. if there's a violation, the township employee or person designated would give notice either by personal service or certified now to the owner or occupant of the property where weeds are growing or remaining in violation of the provisions of the ordinance, directing them to trim them, remove them, or cut them such that they come into compliance. They would have 30 days to do that, and if they are not then cut or returned to violation status, then the non-traffic summary citation can be filed. And to answer Mr. Oxley's question, it would be against the owner of whatever property those violating weeds are on, and if that is HOA pro-open space, that's owned by an HOA, then the HOA would receive the notice to cure and, if necessary, the non-traffic citation.
Isn't most of the weeds actually what are called invasive plants that take over the, from other plants? I mean, we're talking, we're not talking about dandelion, you know, weeds, that sort of?
For instance, kudzu, kudzu vine is on there.
Yeah. I don't think many people realize that they may be planting, even HOAs may not realize that they may be planting invasive trees and plants. And I think an ordinance like this is mainly educational. I mean, it does have this, provisions in there for fines or whatever, but like you said, only if somebody really complains. And even if somebody were to complain, it'd be a good opportunity for, for educating the HOA or the homeowner about the particular plant. And I don't know, I know Mr. Lewis has a lot of experience in this area, and whoever he has to go out there will pick up his knowledge and pass it along, I assume. So, I, I'm not concerned that, you know, we're really gonna hit people with fines.
I have a, my one concern is that if this is on someone's private property, someone would actually have to go onto that private property, which again can be considered trespassing, to see that there's a, one of these weeds is growing there. Now, unless you have a neighbor that has nooculars out all the time and is watching everybody in the neighborhood, I, I just think that this is invasive on the person that owns that particular home, that someone is coming around almost like the weed police and looking at your yard, Mr. Oxley's yard, Mr. Davis's yard, Mr. Fisher's yard, and just walking around seems like walking around carte blanche on private property. Now, I, I don't know what kind of legal stance that would be, but it, but I know that if I was walking around, not even looking for weeds, but just walking around on Mr. Fisher's lawn, just lollygagging, he could probably have me arrested for, for trespassing. So I, I just think this is kind of invasive of what, of what we're asking, what we're asking this ordinance to do. And again, like, who is gonna police it? And if, we're asking homeowners' associations to police the homeowners' association, well, they do a lot of other things that we don't have an ordinance for. I know, for instance, in Newtown Grant, they will not let private homeowners put solar panels on their, on their roofs. But we don't have, we didn't make an ordinance telling them that. They govern themselves.
Well, how does the HOA know whether they have a solar panel on the roof?
Well, because they have to apply and they have, anything that is, what would you call it, architecturally changing a home, has to go before their, I believe it's called their EAC or something like that, that has to approve whether you wanna put a fence up, whether you wanna put new windows up. Everything has to be approved through the homeowners' association. So someone, sure, they could go put the solar panels on without approval, but guess what? They're gonna probably have to take them down.
Okay, but aside from that, you're talking about people trespassing, in our homeowners' association, every six months, every year, the management, and I believe the management of a lot of, same manager, they go around, they walk around the neighborhood, and they see everything in the yard, trees overhanging the sidewalk, if the driveway has crashed, and they report it. They're not trespassing.
I agree. Well, that's, that's, that's probably, I know when I read my management reports, my management company's contract, in that contract states that they're supposed to make these rounds. So they're contracted to do, they're not just doing this willy-nilly. They're contracted to go out there and make these inspections. Now, I, I, I don't know, but our management company and our manager is not an expert on weeds. So that person, they could tell you if you have a crack, a crack in your sidewalk or something like that. But again, we're, we're looking to pass this expertise on the people that don't have this expertise. And I just think it has to be maybe tightened up a little bit. I don't, one of the most invasive plantings that someone can put in is bamboo. And you're allowed to put bamboo within, I believe, 40, 40 feet of the boundary line of your neighbor. Now bamboo, if anyone knows about that, grows underground and basically kills everything. But, that can be planted within a certain distance. So if, if anything, we're talking about invasive plantings, bamboo's one of the worst ones you could have out there. But we allow it.
Well, does this ordinance allow that? Maybe we can have some public comment. We have expert in the audience that could help us out.
I do, I do have a question for the solicitor as well.
We, we have a separate bamboo ordinance.
You do?
We do, yes.
And how is that enforced?
Complaints from the neighbor.
Complaints come in and, and we would investigate it, but we haven't gotten any complaints.
So same thing with this. I mean, it didn't cause us any problems enforcing that?
But this, but, but I'm, I'm just looking at a difference in bamboo, not to pick on bamboo, but bamboo, if I, if I lived next door to you, bamboo is naturally gonna come across, and whatever plantings you may have that are near that is gonna kill it. So you're gonna know that. You don't have to walk onto my property to find that out. These invasive weeds, someone actually is gonna have to come on a particular person's property and say, "Oh, you got an invasive weed." That's where I'm talking about.
I thought I just said that we do it without going on to people's property, you can see what they have, if they have a tree that's an invasive tree, that could be pretty obvious just from walking on a sidewalk or on a common ground.
Well, sure, a tree, a tree is obvious. I mean, you talk.
Well, we're not talking about, like I said, dandelions and stuff like that, I don't believe.
Okay. I, I don't mean to belabor this. Does anybody else have?
I just have one quick question. This is our ordinance, right?
Correct.
So if we, say we, say we pass this advertisement, we have our meeting next time, we can make change, so if I wanna go 30 days to 45 days, or from $250 to $100, or?
If you make those changes, if you make a substantial change to the ordinance, you've gotta re-advertise it. So if you wanna make changes to the ordinance, now would be the time to do it, to get it into the form that you're prepared to act. Doesn't mean you can't make them at the next meeting, but if you do, you've gotta re-advertise it.
I have a question. Mr. Lewis, do we not currently have, I thought we were amending or changing our noxious weed ordinance. Do we not have something on the books already?
That's what this proposal is.
But I thought we already had something. This is adding new, new items to the list.
I believe we, Mr. Sanders, do we, I believe we do have something. This is amending that.
Yeah, I thought we did already, and I was curious what the penalties were on it.
Chapter 10 Health and Safety, Part 1 Vegetation. That's what this amends. Just the vegetation part of the Health and Safety chapter of the Code of Ordinances.
So the penalties and whatnot are already currently what we have in our ordinance?
Vegetation penalties are actually a little bit more strict.
Okay.
A fine of not, oh, well, it says, sentenced to pay a fine of not more than $1,000 plus cost. Doesn't have a minimum. So in that case, it could be less severe.
And that's the original or the current?
That's the cur, that's the, what's on the books now, not the new proposal.
And the new one was less money, right?
The new one was no, less than $250, no more than $1,000. This one, the one that's on the books now.
Left to lower end.
Is no more than $1,000.
Okay.
I, I find that to be a widespread, $250 to $1,000. Why can't it just be, and why can't it just be $250?
That's if the discretion of the board.
Who determines that?
We do.
You do.
Whether you like the person.
Oh, what the fine is, the district judge.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
But if, if it's a straight fee of $250, what's wrong with that?
Then there's no discretion by the judge. If, if the person is found guilty, then it's a $250 fine.
I, I don't think we're, I don't think we're looking to make money off of these people. We're looking for them to comply.
Agreed.
Right. And maybe other people have a wild pool of $1,000 bills. I have no idea. But I'd like to see if anyone in here was, was charged with this and had to fork over $1,000, how fast they could do it. $250 maybe, it is, is something. I, I don't, I don't know, it's just, we have a hard enough time collecting fees on other things, that why would these people even wanna pay us?
So we're talking about amendments, something that already exists that has fines in it already, so why don't we make a motion to amend that?
Fines structure to be $250.
I'm okay with that.
But I think, I think the, what, what, it's not a noxious weed.
We can do that, but I think the purpose of this ordinance is to get a whole lot, a whole long list of invasive and damaging plants into the ordinance that aren't currently in the ordinance now. I think if you wanna focus on penal, notice and penalties and violations, things like that, that's fine too. But I, I don't wanna miss the forest for the trees with regard to this, because it's really to get this list of what are noxious weeds, what are invasive plants, into the ordinance that are not currently there. That's my take on it. I'm not on EAC. I don't, is anybody from the EAC here? I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe the EAC rep can speak to the greater purpose of this ordinance.
Yes, Jan Thileos from the EAC. I have to say that, that I agree with the solicitor, that this is, this is just to update what the Department of Agriculture information is giving us recently. And they have stepped up their efforts to identify noxious weeds and invasive plants. And when it came to penalties, I have to say, I had no idea. Because I was looking at the old ordinance, and the old ordinance says you can actually send someone to jail for 90 days. So I, so I read that and said, I have, you know, somehow I have to lessen the penalties on this.
That's from the non-payment of the fine.
Non-payment of the fine.
You can't send someone to jail for an initial violation.
Right.
If they don't pay it within a certain period of time, then you have to go back to the judge and say, round one. But, I mean, that's, I don't, I don't know, that's a crap.
Yeah, thank you. So this was something, and I looked at the bamboo ordinance, and that was somewhat similar. So I said, I, I don't really wanna, you know, recommend something so severe, so I lessened it. So I think if the supervisors wanna lessen it, you know, go ahead and do that, because I don't have any investment, and the EAC doesn't have any investment in, in signing $1,000 or $2. It's up to you. Is that clear?
In that regard, does the board wanna consider revising the currently, the current ordinance we're considering for advertisement? Before it's advertised, to change the penalty from, say, not less than $50 nor more than $250, instead of $250 and $1,000? Make it 50 to 250? Suggestion.
Sounds good, I mean.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
All right. So if that's the direction of the board, I'll make that change, and we still have to vote on whether to advertise the ordinance with that change.
Okay, so we, we do have a motion in a second, and this would be pending a change in this, this ordinance.
Yes, Chairman, I have a question. What makes, what makes $250 fine to be between 50 to 250? Like, what would that, why, how?
I guess, if it's in noxious state.
Well, no, no, this is money that we would be.
That is the fine that, you know, say.
We're trying to take it out of the district magistrate's hands and put it into ours. But I mean, then that means this board's gonna have to make a decision of $50, $100, who's gonna make that decision?
The non-traffic citations filed with the district judge. The district judge looks at the penalty section and says, "I can fine this person as low as 50 and as high as $250. Let's have a hearing." And if the person comes in, the person says, "Judge, you're right. I, I screwed up. I'm liable for this. I'm guilty of this offense, and I'll take care of it. You'll never see me again." If I'm the judge, I fine him $50. Person comes in, is obstinate, is argumentative, denies it all despite photographic evidence, is difficult. Judge, in his discretion, can fine that person up to $250. So you leave that delta to the judge to admit it. Yeah, the way to take that out of the judge's hands is to just say, "A fine of length, a fine of $100, period." So the judge doesn't have any discretion, and if they're found guilty, they're gonna pay a fine of $100.
I'll go back to saying that I'm okay with a fine of $250. And the reason you're saying the spread from 50 to 250 is when they go to the ju, they're gonna pay more in the cost of going to court than the $50. But if there's a flat fee of $250, the judge knows it's $250, they have to pay the $250 plus whatever court costs.
Correct. They always have, if they're guilty, they always have the court costs.
Yeah. I, I mean, I just think if you're, if you're gonna have someone pleading between 50 and 250, they're gonna go in and say, "Judge, how about 50 bucks?" But I think if you have one flat fee, they know what they have to pay. They're going into court knowing it's $250. Not like praying, "Oh, I hope it's 100, maybe 125."
Then that's the board's, if the board's direction is to make it a flat $250 instead of $250 to $1,000, or instead of 50 to, $250, then I can make it 250 flat.
That, that's just my opinion.
I, I like the range.
I like the range also.
David?
I can correlate the range.
I think a flat fee would be appropriate.
Three ranges and two flights. Well, I'll, I'll go, since we have three directions to change it to the range of no less than 50 or more than 250, I'll revise it and advertise it, if you vote to advertise, and we'll have a, we'll, we'll consider it in our next meeting.
But you're gonna advertise it with 50 to 250?
Correct.
Okay, I can't vote for that.
Are you calling it?
I think you have to.
Well, I think there is a, there is a motion in a second on, on this particular ordinance, so.
Secretary. Well, all right. Let me, let me recommend that the motion and the second be withdrawn at this point, and I'll frame a new motion.
Okay, John?
Did I make the motion?
I think you made the motion.
Yeah, I think I'm talking it.
All right, I'll withdraw it so you can frame a new motion.
I likewise withdraw.
Thank you. That motion is withdrawn, and the second is withdrawn. Let's propose to the board a new motion to authorize the advertisement of the draft weed ordinance subject to the penalty provision being changed from its current $250 to $1,000 fine to read "No less than $50 nor more than $250 plus cost," et cetera. nor more than 250 dollars plus cost, et cetera.
So move.
Second.
Question, second, any more questions for the board on this? From the public? You come up to the public.
Carol Erback from 102 Rittenhouse. I, I'm really astounded at this discussion. First of all, I'm on, I'm a board association. How is the judge going to ever, I mean, depending whether he has a bad day or not? And if you have a vengeful neighbor who says, you know what, and you've got a big, like even the township property, I'm sure you have invasive stuff somewhere on here, or the Archdiocese property, or any big farm property. And you have a neighbor that doesn't like you, he's going to call the township, you're going to have, people go out, maybe don't know, you know, what's invasive. Then what happens? They tell, they take pictures, tell them what to remove and then, they give them a month, so in a month, the township's automatically keeping a record, going to go back there and check it. And second of all, you just voted on a fee schedule, whereas it's not first offense, second offense, third offense, which would make it a lot easier if you're going to do offenses. And some judge has to sit there and say, well, let's see, which offense is this? Who's going to, who's going to be there at that court from the township?
Whoever issued the enforcement notice will be the witness for the township and if we have a hearing, I, as the solicitor, will be present to prosecute that.
But if, but if that person does not show up, it's blown out.
Default judgment.
Exactly.
We currently have this on the books.
Default judgment in the township's favor, make it fined.
This is about changing what's on the list of the current ordinance. We're getting lost in the weeds on the fines.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, the enforcement really has me concerned because I, the reporting of it and the enforcement of it. And second of all, and if an association has property, then the association, I mean, I don't own any property behind me, so you're going to, somebody's going to call the association and tell them to take care of it?
Yes.
And who's going to do that?
The township's staff.
So they're not going to drive around and check this?
No.
It's going to have to be somebody, like the Texas law, somebody's going to have to suit, like, report you slash sue you.
But here's a, but the kicker is, that person that comes onto your property, just sue them for trespassing on your property.
Well, it's not my property, it's the association property.
You're talking about people coming onto other people's property, that's the only way. Listen, I come from concrete jungle. I couldn't tell you a weed from a plant. But maybe I'll just, I don't like a particular person and I'm going to call municipal building and say, I think they got noxious weeds there.
Exactly. I'm with you.
You're absolutely right. I mean, I just find this being a very.
That's why I'm surprised you guys didn't table this tonight and not have this discussion about 50, 100, 1,000, 500. Just table it, for goodness sake.
Well, you can still, the ordinance that we currently have.
You do?
Which has a much higher.
Fines.
But is anybody ever charged with that?
No, I mean, it's.
That's what I mean.
It's really, you're not, it's, it's not really going to happen, the things that you're talking about.
That's easy, yeah, don't worry, are you doing it?
We have an ordinance that we just need to modify the plants on the ordinance.
I mean, as a township manager, do you want to be involved with going on somebody's lawn and telling them they have a bamboo, well, no, bamboo's not on there, oh.
Well, bamboo's got separate cover.
There are some, there's three species of bamboo listed on one of the exhibits for this ordinance.
Well, most HOAs, including us, don't allow bamboo and that kind of thing.
The HOA don't allow a lot, the township doesn't allow a lot. When you live in an HOA, you have to live by both the HOA standards and the township's.
Yeah, I have more of a problem with, it has to be your neighbors or somebody that doesn't like you is going to do this. Because other than that, you haven't had any cases so far. So who would it be?
Well, but if you don't have a penalty, if you don't have a hammer, then there's no, there's no way to, and there's no reason that someone couldn't just ignore it. I mean, if you want to say, this is a problem in our community, there are invasive species, they're alien, they are not local, they kill local species, they do bad things according to the, to the EAC. And we don't want them in our township to the best of our ability. And you want to say, I want to have an ordinance to prohibit them, then you have the ordinance, but no ordinance is enforceable if you don't have a penalty. So board is now talking about penalties. And, look, I don't anticipate that there's going to be a rash of folks calling other people and complaining about their neighbor, saying they have noxious weeds just to spite them. I don't know that that's ever happened before with the vegetation ordinance that's been on the books and now this one. I think this is for bigger problems. I think that if there's a property that's left completely unmaintained and there's bamboo or there's, well, bamboo's a bad example, any of those other tens and tens of noxious weeds that are, that are listed on there and they're there, then at least the township can take action against the owner or occupier of the property.
Well, what happens if it's a right of way, like Pendott's property? Like on edges of property?
Depends who, who may, who's required to maintain it. May belong to Pendott, but the township may be required to maintain it, in which case it's got to police itself. But again, there's no property that's not owned by somebody and that somebody is responsible for it.
I just wish you would have tabled it and not had this discussion.
Well, if we table it, it's just going to come back at the next meeting and this exact same discussion's going to happen. So I'm not sure where we get by table.
True.
Well, the other thing that's.
You'd have more time to discuss it, maybe.
Well, this is the time.
Who's going to, who's going to police it?
I know, who is going to police it? And the township, you're going to send somebody out there.
Township manager going to go out? You going to go police it? Assistant township manager going to go out? Maybe we could send out the fire department, you guys do inspections, you want to go out? I mean, that's something that's not answered in here. And I agree, we're passing an ordinance that has too many questions. We're just raising them right now.
All we're doing is changing the types of growth in the ordinance. The ordinance exists with higher penalties currently. We're getting, I mean, I thought I was doing our okay thing here. We're just wasting time arguing over something that's already in place. We're trying to limit, limit the types of growths that we were regulating with this. That's where it started originally.
I'm all for getting rid of invasive lines. I just don't know how this is going to be monitored. It sounds to me like it's a big project, if, if it really, because, yeah, I think it is.
I mean, if Mike gets called and someone says, there's a property in the city that's got all kinds of issues, I want you to come out and check it out. Mike is not going to drop everything, get in his car at that second and drive out. He's got a staff, he's got folks who he can send out there to investigate, take some pictures, bring them back.
Okay.
Somebody takes a look at it, if it's a pro, what's, what's going to happen?
Who's taking, who's taking a look at it? Is it an expert on, on?
No, they're just going to take, they're going to take pictures and it's going to come back and they can sit with Mike and go over the types of plant it is. If it's obvious that it's a so-and-so plant and you know it's an invasive species.
So now that the determination comes to our township manager to say yes or no.
However he chooses.
I, I don't want to have this debate with you.
And so he gets a ticket, there's a citation that has to go before the district justice. This may not ever happen, and just like you said, it might, it's just, the whole thing sounds like, again, we should maybe have more discussion about it.
Just be nice to your neighbor.
Jan Philios, EAC. Let me just say that this is a state statute that's been in effect for any number of years. Noxious weeds came in in the 19th century to protect farmers from being overrun by these plants. So the state of Pennsylvania says, you cannot propagate, cultivate, transport, or sell these. So what they're looking at is the most pernicious plants we have in our ecosystem, like kudzu. Unfortunately, we don't have that here, but in Philadelphia, it's an extreme problem. So what the state is saying and what townships have adopted into their ordinances is that we don't want you growing noxious weeds. We don't want you propagating kudzu and then selling it and transporting it to New Jersey or wherever you want to, whatever you want to do with it. That's the basis of this. It's not that, it's not initiative from the township. It's, it comes from the state of Pennsylvania. And what they're doing is identifying, and now they're doing it, they're stepping it up, they're doing it four times a year, letting, letting the public know what, what are being added to these lists. In other words, they have these databases across the state and they say that we now are getting more and more sightings of this. So this is rising to a level where we can't control this plant. We feel we can't control it, this plant, so we're adding it to the list. That does not mean that we have those plants in our township. It means that these plants are across the state. So the, when, when I, I'm a horticulturist. When I drive around, I see there are, and a master watershed steward. When I drive around, there are very few of these plants that we have to be aware of. They're not weeds to grow in your lawn. They are like bamboo, Japanese knotweed is another example. And this, it spreads like bamboo, it has rhizomes, underground stems that grow laterally and then they pop up and they are as, as strong as babu, bamboo, and they will split concrete. That's the type of, of thing that we don't want happening. And generally speaking, it's not until some, some of these plants are so invasive they get into someone else's yard. And then, and then they cause problems. So we're not talking about going on people's property and looking for these. These are, you know, when they make themselves a problem, a public nuisance is what we're talking about, thanks.
Hi, my name is Maureen Triber from 105 Rittenhouse Circle. After listening to this discussion, it seems like the spirit of the law is really not to fine people, but to educate people. Like, I don't, I wouldn't know if I have a noxious weed in my backyard. If someone comes, tells me this is a violation. If the spirit of the law is to prevent this, the noxious weed growth, maybe then a different approach would be a, you know, informational notice and an educational approach. And then as, if we have constant repeaters, then those fines should be escalated. So maybe a first fine would be more of an educational, a minor fine. The next level would be a higher fine and a higher fine. And if you have repeat offenders, then those fines should really be high. For the first time offenders, I believe that most people don't even know it's there and would probably be happy to know, or happy to be notified and informed that this is a problem, because it's not only going to kill their neighbor's trees, it's going to kill their own trees. So maybe that's the approach. You really want to get rid of the repeat offenders. That's what I think. So that's would be my, my suggestion. Take it from that point of view. What is this? Uh huh. So, and again, rather than leaving it to a judge to decide, you know, what the fine would be, have specific fines, a first offense, a second offense, a third offense, and a fourth offense. And if this is really a problem to our environment, I believe those fines should be high, significant, if someone is continuing to ignore them. So, thank you.
I'm going to close with a more pleasant note here. My name's Joe Hillock and I'm the president of the Lancy Court Homeowners Association and I reside at 37 Rittenhouse. So we at the Lancy Court are here tonight to take another opportunity to clarify the considerations regarding the access road from the toll settlement proposal. So.
This is, yeah, this, this, there's a, there's a motion for the talks, for the, it's not public.
This wasn't public?
No, 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 no. We're still discussion, discussing this motion. We're, we're getting into the weeds on the weeds. Anyone else on the weed ordinance?
Well, I mean, if they're going to be, you know, these, first notice and all this other different channels and then it's affecting our environment and they have ignored it, I don't understand why there would be a range from 50 to 250, it should just be one flat fee.
Well, that's not the proposal.
Well, maybe we should change the proposal.
Well, we have three that don't want to change. That, that's, that's the whole thing.
Okay, we have the motion, we have a second. We've had discussion, I think we've talked about weeds for long enough. And again, this is just to advertise, we'll have more discussion when it comes for approval. But those who would like to advertise with the range of 50 to 250, say aye.
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 Those who do not, say no. No. So passes three to two.
Thank you, that's a weed ordinance.
Thank you. Okay. Managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. General fund balance as of this evening is $4,015,394. We have the plan expiration before the board with no action required. We have Chief Forsythe here this evening. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to present the September of 2021 report to the board. We had three building fires, 58 EMS calls, three hazmat calls, two service calls, 14 calls that were dispatched and were canceled while we were en route to them, and 26 false alarms for a total of 106 calls. The emergency services department conducted 71 fire safety inspections in Newtown Township and 50 in Newtown Borough. Next Thursday night is the truck housing and dedication at Station 45 for our new rescue truck. You're all invited. The Fire Association and Emergency Services took a vote and we are dedicating the truck to Mr. David Penney Packer. He's a 64-year member of the Fire Association. He has lived in Newtown his entire life. He's a United States Air Force veteran. He's a member of the American Legion post here in Newtown. And he's been a pillar in the Fire Association for a long time. So we took a vote and the truck will be dedicated in his name. So you're all invited to attend next Thursday night at 14 Liberty Street and we will begin at 7:00. We're going to have light refreshments at 6:00 and the public is invited. So we would like to see everybody attend this event. That's my report for the month of September. If anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
Chief, I have a question.
Sure.
It's in regards to the, looks like the false alarms you have listed on, I guess, the second, page one of the second report.
Yes, sir.
Are they false alarms?
Yes.
Is there any way to, in the future, break these down, Township Borough?
Sure, I can try to do that. Not unfortunately, but we've got a new software thing that we're using and we're having some trouble generating the reports that we used to generate. So I will work on that tomorrow and see if we can break it down between the Borough and the Township.
Oh, wait, oh, wait. Okay, well, it is broken down, but you'd have to go and actually, it, it, you know, check them off. But if you could have Borough, you could have Township.
On page, the first page, it's broken down by, it says broken down by district, but it's actually municipality.
Okay.
So that's, it's all broken down there. But I can break down the calls for service.
Thank you, that'd be a big help. Thanks a lot.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Chairman, I have one item under my report for the board's consideration. Delaware Valley Health Trust, who's the township's provider of health insurance for employees, has provided a one-year or two-year option to extend healthcare coverage. Either scenario, rates for health insurance cover will not, coverage will not increase in 2022. Should the two-year selection be made, the township will receive an additional $63,000 in credit, as a credit in 2022 with a rate cap increase of 6.5% for 2023. If you recall, the township selected the two-year option under similar terms for the years 2021 and 2022. So the, we're recommending that the township select the two-year option based on those, the offer. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to approve. So the appropriate motion would be authorization to approve the two-year extension with Delaware Valley Health Trust selecting the two-year option.
Does such a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, a call of question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Mack, minutes, bills, list, and reports.
Okay. I move that we approve the minutes of the October 13, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions from the board, from the public on the minutes? Seeing none, a call of question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention. Okay.
I make a motion that we approve our bills on the October 27, 2021 bills list totaling
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions from the board on the bills list? From the public? Seeing none, a call of question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0.
Finally, I make a motion that we approve inter-fund transfers according to the bills list of October 27, 2021 of $19,460.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. On the funds transfer. Is that the correct number?
Lower than usual.
Well, yeah, but I'm seeing another for $2,048.31. Was that not added in?
What I see is...
No, no, I know that, yeah, we all see that one, but what I'm saying is I see a separate one for another $2,000. Mr. Lewis, should that be added in to that?
Okay. Well, because of my son, I was...
So, yes, that's the pay flex, so yes, that should be added in.
Okay, so can somebody add those two figures together? $2,048.31, $19,460, no cents.
I think I have $21,508.31.
Okay. So that will be funds transfer.
I'd like to amend my motion, then. I amend my question.
Okay.
I move that we approve the inter-fund transfers according to the COVID-27, 2021 bills list of $21,508.31.
Okay. Any questions from the board, from the public? Seeing none, a call of question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay. Now we going into our second session of public comment. So anyone that has public comment, please come up to the podium.
Again, my name's Joe Hillock. I'm the president of the Delancey Homeowners Association, and I reside at 37 Rittenhouse Circle. So again, we're here tonight to clarify the considerations regarding the access road from the toll settlement proposal. And the main question that we have is why is North Drive not considered to be a viable access point? Now, we opposed this question on September 22 at the Board of Supervisors meeting, and at that meeting, we also invited any township supervisors to meet with the Delancey Board. We were advised at this September 22 meeting that Mr. Sander will be scheduling a meeting of interested Delancey residents, Toll Brothers, and the Board of Supervisors. On October 18, Mr. Mack took us up on our invitation and met with the Delancey Board and gave a brief background on what he knew about the toll proposal. He had no knowledge of any impending meeting scheduled with Toll, Delancey, and the township, but he did advise us, the Board, that he will request an executive session between the supervisors, Toll, PennDOT, and the Delancey representatives. On October 21, we reached out to Mr. Calabro, the Board of Supervisors chairman, for a meeting to enlighten us further on what North Drive was not, why North Drive was not considered as an access point for the new toll proposed development. We invited him to a meeting, and he said he would, he would consider it. But when I asked the question about why North Drive, he answered with a question, and I'll just quote, "How 45 homes really would affect your development of over 100-plus homes? For any traffic impact to happen, everyone would have to leave at the same time of day to get to the intersection at the same time and go in the same directions. What are the odds on that?" So I can answer that question now by saying conversely, how would 45 homes really affect the North Drive access point if we're looking at the same conditions? The fact that a traffic signal already exists at North Drive should be an overriding decision-maker for safety, safety, safety aspect. The Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, DVPRC, has advocated in their 2008 report that if a parcel is development that is aligned with North Drive, then North Drive is the recommended access point. We do not understand why you have no date proposed for the discussion of this toll-proposed project with the Delancey residents, Toll, and the Board of Supervisors. I just read in the minutes that the holdup was that there was no, waiting for the traffic report, and that seems to me that that now has come about. So when will be, when will be on the calendar for this discussion? Thank you.
And I think I pretty much asked you of the Delancey Court, how much cut-through traffic do you have through there? Because you only have one access point.
We have one, yes.
Now, we had a discussion with people that live in Newtown Crossing, and their main concern was cut-through traffic because of Arcadia being built there, of which we kind of agreed with them that cut-through traffic is not a good thing. But what you're asking is for the people of Newtown Grant to take the cut-through traffic, of which there would be only one access point for this development, of which the Delancey Court has one access point.
Right.
Maybe, of which, again, people coming from the Toll Brothers development are not going to cross over to come into the Delancey Court, and people from the Delancey Court are not going to cross over to come into the Toll Brothers, unless they're visiting somebody. Now, but, people that live in that development that may take Stoopville Road will cut through Newtown Grant. Now, believe me, I don't think 45 homes would even be affected to Newtown Grant, because where I live, there's 376 units. Just count two cars per unit. Then across the way, in Whispering Woods, there's 177 homes. Never has there been a backup at that light. But my question to you is, what if of the 376 units at Newtown in Society Place, every one of them on their way home just took a ride through your development?
Well, I don't think they can.
Would you like that?
I don't think they can.
Yeah, I can. I can go into your development and ride around. Why can't I?
If you have a road to go through, why not? Because I'm fairly certain that people from the Delancey Court would, if this became the access point, would, wouldn't be able to make much of a left turn with the construction going on, and would probably turn right and go through Newtown Grant, make a U-turn, and come back on the left turn.
So you're saying they won't be able to make the left for eternity? Or maybe...
That's our contention, yeah.
Oh, really? So if you got two cars coming there, one from the Toll Brothers development and one from the Delancey Court, and they both want to make a left, aren't they both going in opposite directions? And again, why would you want to come into that development unless you were visiting somebody?
Come into what?
And why would they want to come into your development?
Come into what development?
Because you have no other access point except one way in and one way out.
That's correct.
And that's what we're offering this development, one way in and one way out. But, I don't know. As a matter of fact, if I were them, I'd be mad at the Delancey Court for having, what, 100, 150-some-odd homes?
120.
So you're almost double their size, more than double their size, but you're complaining about 45 homes.
We're talking about a senior community with concerns about safety leaving the development. That, that hasn't changed, so...
That's something we had a long time ago, promised we would have, and I think Mr. Sander suggested an executive session where we could discuss this. It's not just the...
Not just, not just the Board of Supervisors, but get...
Right. And I know that Mr. McCarron also suggested people from Newtown Crossing would be invited...
Newtown Grant.
Newtown Grant, sorry. And I suggested that some representative from PennDOT be there, and there is a precedent because PennDOT had a meeting with the Arcadia people and the residents in that area discussing why they didn't approve of this or that. And so why don't we just stick to that, because I think there's some other concerns about this that you and your colleagues have voiced, not just the signal. So I think it would be appropriate, since we already sort of promised that we would have this meeting to set up, to schedule. I hear you, but apparently only the seniors that live in the Delancey Court and their $800 million homes are, should be promised safety, not the people that live in Newtown Grant. They should be promised more traffic through their development.
But you already have a light. You already have, you already have a light that would be controlling the traffic.
As I said, there are other concerns. No one ever goes through a light and a red light, or by accident may get hit by a truck that's coming in the other direction that misses that light. The light is not the issue. The issue is that you're complaining about 45 homes, maybe a total of 90 cars, which, again, like I stated, have to leave at the same time, of which you have to leave at the same time, get to the same intersection, make the same turn, and apparently you know what the odds are, because you said you know the odds. I don't know the odds, because I know it's almost nonexistent, because I live in, I live in a development, again, where just between our two is almost 500 homes. The only time I ever get backed up at that light is if there's a school bus, and it's miniscule. Now, maybe you're afraid of these 45 homes, because you think you're going to get stuck in traffic, but you're still going to get stuck in traffic if you're making a left-hand turn, because you have to wait for the passing traffic to go by. I find this, I have to say, I'm not blaming you, but I find this as being a very selfish act on the Delancey Court's...
I'm sorry you see it that way, but we've, I feel selfish act on Newtown Grant, where you already have a light there. So why, why, why you already have a traffic being directed by signal, signal, we have nothing of that.
If it wasn't for Newtown Grant and the Master Board and the Board of Society Place, there would be no Delancey Court. But little do you people know the history, because you're not told the history. The history goes back to about 2004, 2005. I'll give you a history lesson.
Well, I think our...
Of which there was going to be...
I think our, our board member here, Carol Urbach, is one of the newest member, one of the oldest members at the Delancey Court. I think she knows, she's our historian, she knows it very well.
I know the history, because I lived there. I even watched when your original builder pulled out, and I didn't hear a hammer banging on a rooftop for about a year and a half. And I remember when some of your residents came to this board and begged us to do something, because you weren't getting a recreation center, begging us to help us. And what we had to do is hold back on certificates of occupancy, so McGrath had to build it for you. Then you got bailed out by Toll Brothers, the same company that now you're complaining about that are building 45 homes across the street.
I think Toll did rather well building our development. They already had all the plans, everything was all laid out, so this was, this was a good, this was a good deal for Toll, building at the Delancey Court.
Yeah, well, it's a good deal for you. Rest of these houses would still be empty. If Toll Brothers didn't bail you out, didn't bail McGrath out, half of those homes, the roads weren't even paved, and your historian can attest for that. I lived next door in Society Place, and I watched that place go up. And the reason it went up is because we declined someone who wanted to build three huge office buildings on that property, and they backed out of that. Then we had to change the zoning to residential, because it wasn't residential, it was commercial. The rest, it wouldn't be there. But nobody knows that history. Only, only, the only thing you know is that you're there, and nobody else can be around you.
Like I said, I think our, our secretary and historian knows that history pretty well.
I have an historian that's sitting behind her, too, that can attest for what I'm saying.
But anyway, all this is...
I watched, I watched before her house went up. I know before her house was built. What does that, that you're calling yourself a historian, when I know more history about this property than you do?
I am not a historian.
Well, that's what this gentleman said.
Mr. Calabro, this has nothing to do, it's, we're just talking about safety. I was here at a meeting when this five acres next door came before you guys and wants to build 21 townhomes. They're going to have to get out, too. Right now, we've had three accidents...
They're not building it. It's a dog.
But whatever. They, they, they're going to, well, then he threatened to build a professional building, it's owned professional.
It's gone.
So there's not going to be anything there in that five acres.
Right now, there's nothing going to be there.
Okay. That's a good thing. You're saying that there's 45 cars. We're talking about school buses, emergency vehicles.
And they're constantly going to be going...
So what we are going to do, and I do it already, and I'm going to...
24 hours a day, these, these vehicles are going to be going through that.
We still can't make a left-hand turn now without the 45 vehicles.
Well, exactly. We were willing to...
And when they close Swamp Road, we're never going to get out. So we're going to go right, and we're going to go through Newtown Grant. We're either going to go all the way through to Swamp...
We were willing to see if there could be a light put there, and you still didn't want that.
If we had a light, we could, yeah, we could turn, and it would only, the light would be, have a trip, so that the only time that light would turn is if there's traffic, just like it is...
We can solve this. Here's my suggestion. I think Toll Brothers got some, something from PennDOT recently in regards to the access point, and I guess North Drive was mentioned. Is that correct? Can you divulge that?
Today, I believe, Mr. Lewis received an email that he passed on to the board that PennDOT...
Well, here's, here's my suggestion. My suggestion is, I know that Newtown Grant's not afraid of 45 homes. So tell them to proceed with what PennDOT is proposing, and let Newtown Grant, we'll gladly absorb what you don't want to absorb.
Good.
Okay?
That'd be great.
But then I also propose that there should still be a second access point for this development that comes out on the municipal drive without a traffic light.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's the thing we should do right now.
Have a discussion...
The best thing is, maybe it should be done near your development, and I'll see how you feel.
Mr. Chairman...
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that my development's close enough, but what I'm saying is that maybe we should have a discussion amongst...
No, I'm trying to eliminate the discussion and let Newtown Grant be the bigger development. We are the bigger development, but all I'm saying is being the bigger people here. And that's, is that agreeable to you?
What's that?
Agreeable to you?
What, what agreeable?
That Newtown Grant takes the traffic going from North Drive across to the new development.
I thought we were...
I don't have a comment out of the public.
No, I thought we were in the, nothing was done, this is all part of the proposal? Is that where we're at here?
I say that we, the Board of Supervisors backs out of the agreement with Toll Brothers.
We don't have an agreement yet, do we? Did we sign an agreement? So the point of this, having this meeting between interested parties, this executive session, like we did with Arcadia, was to work out a number of these grievances and to give the residents access to the actual settlement agreement, which they currently do not have, and which we did for Arcadia in a closed meeting, an executive session, in which we also might invite Pendott and have representatives from Toll Brothers there. I don't think we should be arguing about it here tonight.
What I'm saying is we could eliminate all this by just doing what...
No, because they had other concerns.
And then we'll have the people...
For example, the access road to Municipal Drive cuts through Newtown property, and we're giving that property to Toll Brothers.
Approximately how many acres of that property are we giving them?
It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does, because if we're giving two acres to Toll Brothers in return, the township...
I thought it was 4.7 acres.
All right.
Excuse me, can I say something?
If we're giving 4.7 acres from Toll Brothers, Toll Brothers is giving this township over 100 acres of open space. Now, that's a pretty good return on our investment. If you were to take 100 acres and just hypothetically, $100,000 an acre, you're talking about $10 million worth of land.
Mr. Chairman, all I'm saying is we shouldn't be having this discussion right here, right now, when we're all not prepared for it. We should have this discussion in an executive session, and we can discuss all of it.
And the engineering that Toll Brothers would have to do, the plan to create an entrance at North Drive and... Well, I'm sure Toll Brothers, but what I'm trying to do is alleviate the aggravation for the Lancy Court by saying, Toll Brothers has already been given something from Pendott in regards to North Drive. Let them proceed with that. There would be no need for any kind of meeting.
You're not relieving my aggravation, and I'm aggravated, I don't want to have this...
I'm not arguing, I'm making a statement, I'm just saying, let's do it and have Toll Brothers go forward with the suggestion from Pendott. And the Pendott suggestion would be, it was mentioned before, to use North Drive.
I think any way we cut it, we need to end the meeting.
Well, now the concerned party should be Newtown Grant, because we're taking the Lancy Court out of the equation.
Well, Newtown Grant was always part of the discussion. Even Mr. McCarron said all interested parties should be involved in the discussion. The settlement agreement does not mention the biggest and the best, but that could come under discussion at the executive session.
Hi, my name is Maureen Treiber, 105 Rittenhouse Circle. I would ask that Mr. Sanders had mentioned something about the report from Pendott. Is that something that you can share with us at this point? And my other question would be, I think we're kind of ignoring the safety of the new development, whether it's 45 or however many homes. Anyone coming out of that development will be safer, it will be safer, I should say, for anyone coming out of that development to go to an intersection that has a traffic light. So we're taking people, we have an, there is an opportunity to put the traffic out into 403 at a signalized intersection rather than Municipal Drive. We all know everything is safer.
I'm agreeing with that aspect.
Yeah, so that would...
I don't know why we're belaboring it, because we're just going to go with North Drive.
And then my next question is, can, when will that Pendott study be shared with the community, the entire community? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the Board of Supervisors and Township Residents. My name is Andrea Ahern, and I am a resident of Eagle Ridge. As tonight's agenda indicates, the Board will be discussing the upcoming fiscal year, including revenues and expenses, which have an important impact on township residents and township services. The 2022 draft budget, as presented last week by Mr. Lewis, includes a tax increase to address the ongoing public safety concerns surrounding fire services. I believe we can all agree that public safety, fire services, and ensuring the NFA has what they need to continue to operate should be top of mind. I believe we can also all agree that financial stewardship of the township budget is a critical duty and responsibility of this Board. Without the Treasury Department releasing the final rule, none of us can confidently state that ARPA funds could not be deployed to bridge the gaps associated with the fire services, or to explore a consultant's report for a new police building, or any of the other items which Mr. Lewis professionally walked us through last week. As an SBA lender who was on a team which deployed 400 million in PPP funds to small business owners, I can confidently articulate that guidance from the federal government changes, and it changes frequently. What we may know today to be the likely eligible uses of ARPA funds could change prior to the final rule being rolled out. Additionally, I would encourage the Supervisors to work collaboratively, to engage in conversations, to foster new ideas, and create synergies within the budget, to alleviate the need for a tax increase. Including the fund balance, this is a $16 million budget, and the tax increase only equates to approximately $500,000 in revenue. Even without ARPA funding, I would hope that this Board, seasoned professionals that you are, can get creative enough to find ways to create cash flow needed to ensure that the NFA has the capital to operate effectively. Going to the residents to bridge cash flow gaps should be a last resort. After every available option, scenario, and possible synergy has been exhausted, this should be the mindset during every budget cycle. We have seen how vocal the residents have been regarding the issues related to recent tax increases, and I anxiously await the next steps and discussions offered by this Board regarding the 2022 budget. I strongly encourage the Board to make every reasonable effort to ensure that the proposed budget has no increase, forgive me, that the approved budget has no increase in taxes by coming to the residents with new ideas and creative solutions. Thank you for the time this evening, and I would like to also extend my gratitude to the entire Board of Supervisors, Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Sander for the courtesies you have all extended to me as I have been coming to the podium recently. I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Gray. I'm also a member of the Newtown Environmental Advisory Committee, 140 Hillborne Drive. I just want to thank you, the Board of Supervisors, for endorsing the feasibility study. We haven't missed the boat on this topic. We have a chance to participate with a number of other municipalities in the township, I'm sorry, in the county, for converting to LED lighting. It seems like an easy win for us budgetarily. Hopefully, this will pay off in the long run, and I just want to thank you for your support of the feasibility study. Thank you, guys. Good night.
John D. April, Newtown Grant, biggest and the best. Welcome back, Phil. Sorry to hear you were ill. Boy, everything was kept quiet and everything, because of HIPAA or whatever, but I didn't know you were sick. I'm sorry, was sorry to hear that. Glad you're back. You could keep, you know, one of the circus members up there in line, you're the only one that can do it. Okay, we just had the discussion about the access route from the Toll Brothers houses. First of all, it's not approved yet, and your problem probably is, Delancey Place's problem is with, the people made the agreement with Toll Brothers with this thing. And as a board member of Newtown Home Owners Association, I posed the question, why not Municipal Drive and why North Drive? You know, there's 1,751 homes in Newtown Grant, almost a third of the population of Newtown. Some little upstart community wants boss us around? Get out of here, you know? And somebody mentioned that Newtown Grant's involved in the, you know, first I heard of that, you know, I hope, I hope you could some way shut, you know, Toll Brothers down. Probably another thing to be met, I'd be met at the Archdiocese. They're the ones that got Stonemore involved, and Stonemore has a tendency, when they're not selling burial plots fast, they sell off the land. They've been known to do that. Just look it up online, it's easy. Another thing about Newtown Grant, we don't want political signs on the common ground. I mean, you look at it, it's a mess. Then you have, you know, the people vandalizing and stuff. We have to pay our landscaper to take those signs down when he mows, which lately has been once a week. You know, we don't want the signs. So, you know, people saying vandalism and stuff, we don't want to hear anything, not on Newtown Grant property. You know, homeowners, I have signs on my lawn, that's my property. That's fine. But, you know, Newtown Grant property, the common ground, no, we don't want them. Speaking of the election, it's the last meeting before the election, and I always say, everybody get out and vote. It's your civic duty. Don't want to hear about lazy people, you know? Get out and vote. And vote for somebody that's a dedicated, long-term resident, not somebody that just moved here, you know, less than 10 years ago, not somebody that biggest campaign thing is plastic bags and noxious weeds. You don't want that. You know, as far as judge, we have a judge, you know? Not some accountant at an office in a borough, you know? Just think about when you're voting, just think about who you want. And I'll see you on Election Day. Somebody wants to talk to me, I work the polls outside over here. Thank you.
On to old business, and it would be the 2022 budget discussion, open to the Board for whatever they would like to discuss in regards to the budget.
Mr. Chairman, could you possibly take a five-minute recess?
Absolutely. Why don't we, what time is it? While we come back at 10 after 9:00.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Idea of what's there. We know probably ninety plus percent of what's there, but the risk in doing it is that if it's ultimately not there.
Mr. Sanders, did you see the?
I did.
From Scott Urban, the council piece that?
I did.
He's saying that the interim report is considered final.
Until they do, until they do the change.
Well, they're not going to change it. They're going to make additions and modifications, but if it's final, you know, he's saying that expenditures that are permitted under the interim rule are you permitted to use it for that if it's under that interim rule.
My advice and our office's advice to all municipal finances, wait until the rules are final.
So there's two different opinions, I guess.
Yep.
Well, I don't think he ever stated it definitely is, or weren't there a couple maybes and could be and stuff. And I'm not saying you guys are not right or wrong, but I don't think he's also gone out on one to say it's a definite.
Well, this is why he's advising all townships that belong to members.
Well, I think he also sat in there to ask our solicitor. He says, refer to your solicitor in regards to things.
Sure. It's, you know, like two doctors having different opinions.
Absolutely.
Three opinions.
But I just want to get back to Mr. Oxley mentioned about collecting the money from, I'll ask Mr. Lewis this, but is that something that we should basically put in some sort of separate fund because we're collecting that money for a particular purpose?
Well, if it, I mean, that would be the board's discretion of where to put it in a fund. If it doesn't go into the general fund, then I would say it probably would be appropriate to be in the fire protection fund.
Yeah, because I've seen things that were basically misused in the past that went into the general fund and what happened, like anything else, it went in one window and went right out the other window. But I think if we put it in a specific fund, I don't know, we could call the fu-- I don't know, fire fund, I mean, we may have a fire fund already, I'm not sure.
The board may wish to allocate some of it for the Fire Association Capital Fund, you know, for future purchases.
Yeah, I just think that we should earmark this in a particular fund because I've seen cell towers sold for five hundred thousand that went into the general fund and then the next week it was used to do payroll. So that's not what we want. We want this money to be long lasting and ongoing, but that would be my suggestion. But the whole thing is, right now it's a pipe dream and the borough is going to get another year of free service from us. That's why I asked the chief to break it down by borough and township, because I'm just curious how many times our fire engines have gone into the borough of which our taxpayers pay for the salaries of borough firefighters to go into the borough for free. Now, I'll equate it to maybe Mr. Lewis wants to send his assistant manager to work in the borough for free, but we're going to pay her salary. I still don't get it and hopefully I think you guys are going to waste your time, you're not going to accomplish anything, and that's not saying, you know, you're not great negotiators. It's just saying if I was the borough, I'd keep kicking the can down the road.
In that regard, let me just say that we do plan to meet with them again at their request.
And what I would say is let's meet again next month. Let's meet again next month. Let's meet again next month. We met with them five years ago about the same topic. And five years ago, I'm thinking that maybe in October, they sat across from us at the conference table and said, well, yeah, let's revisit this in January. So take five years ago and add it to the January, that January never came.
I understand.
What can they give us for free? Nothing. But what we're giving them is our personnel for free and they don't even want, they don't even want to pay anything for it.
What's your suggestion?
I suggest that you keep emphasizing that their taxpayers are going to have to pay for a five million dollar fire department because it's in their plans. And tell them to take how many mills go into five million dollars. Sell that to your citizens instead of paying us two hundred and fifty thousand to come in to buy. I don't know.
But that's going beyond the scope of the budget. Although the issue is if we had that money, it would be a better situation.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Say, what we call the pipe dream. I remember last year you talked about hope, you talked about hope all the time. But say we get some sort of, yeah, and those dollars do come in.
That's fantastic.
But that meeting will be, I'd say it will happen, but what if it, you know, does happen, we have a meeting next week. Shouldn't, shouldn't this millage increase recommendation be reworked?
Well, yes, it could be done next year after we pass this budget, we recoup this money next year, we can make an adjustment on anything being added. We can't adjust in the negative. So we get two hundred and fifty thousand, we can adjust it in the budget. And that's where if we have a fire, whatever fire fund, it could go into that. We're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand, which is only a hundred thousand dollars off of one mill. So we could be maybe not, we're cutting, cutting it down from one and a half to one, cutting it out to half. They almost owe us one mill when you look at it in tax language. But we're not getting it and we haven't gotten it for five some odd years, but what they'll do is send us an insulting letter telling us that we can't charge them for our services rendered.
But we didn't charge them and they come back to us and ask us for a meeting, they might talk.
Of course, tennis. What does that mean?
We'll have this meeting and we'll report back to you and we'll.
Again, I'll use the analogy, if I borrowed ten thousand dollars off of you because you painted my house, you put new windows in, you did all these services, and then I say, I'm sorry, I can't pay you next month. And then when you come to me and say, hey, Phil, how about paying me that ten thousand dollars? Oh, come on, can't we wait till next month? I'll push you off until five years from now. But that doesn't do you any good. I mean.
I know where you live, so.
Well, yeah, you could take the windows out of my house, but then technically, again, you'd be tres-- I'd have you arrested for trespassing. So not only that, you out ten thousand dollars, but that's breaking it down. The borough is just a, an aggravating situation and of course they'll just keep meeting and meeting and meeting. Why wouldn't they? I mean, come on, they're smart, they're playing us. Anyway.
So we have the awkward question to some extent.
Real estate transfer tax. John, I know that's close to your heart. Do you have any input on real estate transfer tax?
No, but I had a suggestion for the road improvement.
If I might get into that.
Yeah. I know that we have a line item of, what is it, three hundred thousand dollars in the general fund, and what I've heard from the last presentation was for various reasons, we didn't spend all that last year, but then it got dumped into the general fund to spend on salaries, for example, as Phil mentioned with his suggestion. What I would propose is that we set up a special fund, a road improvement capital fund, and this can be done under section fifteen oh eight of the second class township code. And instead of three hundred thousand dollar line item in the, in the general fund, that three hundred thousand dollars would stay in the capital fund that we set up so that if there is any excess, it can stay in that fund and not be diverted to something else. And I would even suggest that we include some more money in there, but that's another different discussion. My idea is that we need a road improvement capital fund that would protect the money that's in there and use it for that specific purpose from year to year.
Well, is that three hundred thousand dollars liquid fuels?
No, that's tax money.
General fund, yes.
But we do have, we do get three hundred and some odd thousand in liquid fuels, which can only be used for the road programs.
Well, it can be used to purchase some other things like salt, for example.
Yeah, we purchased rock salt, some equipment. There's a hot box asphalt recycling machine in this year's budget to be purchased with liquid fuels money. So the way, the way the road program this year was structured is that five hundred and thirty thousand would be taken from liquid fuels and then there would be the additional three hundred thousand from general fund.
Right. I'm just saying, you know, you did mention last year for one reason or another that all that three hundred thousand was not spent. I believe that's what you said.
Yeah, it wasn't.
And then where did that money go that wasn't spent? It didn't stay dedicated to roads. And what I'm suggesting that, and if anything like that happens in the future, it stays dedicated to roads, carries over to the next year. This way, we hope we can pave more than two miles of roads a year, which has been the average.
Three point one, I think this year.
Two miles per year for the last three years, if I could finish my statement. Maybe this year it's going to be three point six five, but that still keeps us where we are. It doesn't increase the number of roads in great condition in Newtown. There'll still be many roads that will need repairs. So looking to the future, I just thought that would be a better way to handle the money than to put, keep it into the general fund. How much money goes in there? We can discuss that, but we already have three hundred thousand that we talked about.
Is that a fund that we can have real estate taxes go directly into? So if we establish a road, road program fund, could we?
Well, how does money get into any of these funds? Of course. Yeah. According to the cap, according to the second class township code, the board of supervisors may create and maintain a separate capital reserve fund for any anticipated capital expenses.
Any anticipated capital plan.
Which funds shall be designated for specific purposes or purposes when they're created. The funds, the monies in the fund shall be used for no other purpose unless the board of supervisors declares that conditions in the township make the other expenses more urgent than those for which the fund was created.
So technically that money can only stay in that fund for that particular purpose.
Correct.
Unless we determine that the money should be shifted.
Correct.
Of which we're only basically going back on the reason why we put that money in that particular fund.
Well, it requires a vote.
Well, yeah, like I said, I've seen votes where we've sold a five hundred thousand dollar asset.
But this statement applies to any fund. We could, the fire fund, we could vote to say, well, we don't want all that money in there after all, take some out. According to this second class code, it applies to any fund.
Well, I know it applies, but sometimes there is some sort of internally ethical or moral way of doing things. And like I'm trying to say, again, not trying to give a history lesson here, but in the past, we've had boards that sold an asset, an income producing asset because they could not make payroll. We had people working in this building that could not make payroll. But what did the board do? Let's sell a particular asset.
As I said, Phil, you could do that with any fund. That doesn't mean we didn't set up funds. We set up specific funds for specific purposes. We've been doing that all along. That's history.
Yeah, in the back of here, we have a whole bunch of funds that have been set up. Non-uniform pension fund, I'm sure we can't touch that. Firefighters pension fund. So I mean, there's some, some funds that we can't touch legally, so.
And we had planned this year to use up all that.
Yeah, we had planned last year to use up all that money, but we didn't. What I'm saying is, what's the difference? You got the money in the fund. If it's used up, fine, that's what it was there for. If it's not used up, it still stays, whatever's left stays in there for next year.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to establishing that fund. I don't know if we need to do it this year.
Why not? Why shouldn't we do this? This is what happens all the time. We don't set up a meeting, we're not signing this letter of intent until next time, you know, let's just put everything off. Let's put everything off. I mean, I, I would like to have the budget advertised as it is. You know, everybody, everybody here has been pushing and pushing and pushing for an early budget and now we have a budget that seems to be as tight as possible.
We haven't been pushing for an early budget approval. We've been pushing for get the discussion done early.
But what I'm saying is.
For example, Doylestown had a discussion about road work in May.
I don't live in Doylestown.
I'm just using it as an example. I don't care where you live.
There was a mistake. Well, I care where I live because I represent the people that live. Maybe you represent Doylestown. But there was also someone who put incorrect information saying Lower Makefield had formulated their budget when they didn't. It was, it was Upper Makefield. So somebody's spreading false information out there constantly.
There we go.
But here we go.
Yeah, here we go.
It's what you did. You, and I talked to the Lower Makefield Township Manager today and he said that it caused him more problems than you could think because of the misinformation that has been put out there, constant.
I'm right up there with Facebook in terms of misinformation.
Absolutely.
I guess Congress is going to investigate me.
I hope they do. Either Congress or maybe, maybe the Human Relations Commission if you say any more derogatory remarks about race or whatever.
What?
Don't get me started, we're talking about the budget.
Yeah, you already started. What are you attacking me for?
Because you deserve it.
Oh, right.
And I don't care out there, who out there hears me, anyone that listens to what you put up there has to, has to be questioned too.
I have to sit here and listen to this?
No, you don't. Leave.
I am.
We'll pass the budget without you.
Pass it.
That's rare, rare leadership.
I'm not going to sit here and be insulted.
Well, you insult everybody else that comes in here.
Yeah.
All you do is insult everybody.
Good.
You represent every other township and borough out there besides Newtown.
Please, please.
This is, this is what they did here, this is what they did there.
Yeah.
Never saw, I never in all my years have actually a supervisor so negative against Newtown Township as you. And I served on boards with a few real.
Interesting.
Interesting people, yes. Okay. I should have did this a couple hours ago, maybe you would have left earlier.
Good night. Hello. I, just back on track a little bit. I did, I did have another question. It was, I think the EIT, while we were, there was a transfer taxes, the EIT is projected to come down a little bit.
So what we did with the projection for the EIT is we took the year end actuals from, I'm sorry, twenty twenty and applied a two and a half percent increase.
Okay.
So we're projecting that to stay relatively flat.
Okay, the bottom, the bottom line of that, it does go down a little bit. But okay, gotcha. Because the, why is there such an increase in that? Is it because of people working at home and now going?
Is there such an increase in, in?
The EIT, the resident earned income tax.
Well, there's, there's, there's not much of an increase. The, where is it? The actual from twenty twenty, four million seven hundred and forty one thousand four hundred and forty nine dollars. We took a two and a half percent increase on that number to bring it up to that four million eight hundred estimate for next year.
And we're also taking some sort of hit on the non-resident too. Is that correct?
Yes, that figure, the year-to-date is showing negative. I think Keystone had to actually refund some money or some inappropriate fund somehow. So we keep that figure around five thousand. Twenty twenty, we were actually at thirty thousand, so that, all these numbers vary and they're, they're hard to pin down, which is why you see these, the swings in them, like the non-resident earned income tax. Last year was two million one hundred and seventy three thousand. You know, we're keeping at about two million just to, just to try to be consistent.
But overall, it looks like you're being pretty conservative with revenues, not inflating them too high.
That's correct. I mean, we would rather budget on the more conservative side and wind up on the better on the end than to over-budget on revenues and, and then wind up in a negative. There is an increase proposed under real estate transfer taxes. We've had very strong the last two years and I think the near future, at least from a development perspective, I think there will be some more transfers that occur, so we're pretty comfortable with bumping that up to eight hundred thousand.
Well, it's only a fifty thousand dollar.
Right, it's only fifty thousand dollars, but it, the market is strong here.
Yeah, well, if we have developments built, yeah. It's strong.
And people who want to live there.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe other townships.
My concern going into the future is other township will institute an earned income tax.
I agree.
Not that we can predict the future, but if we could, what are, what are we going to do when that happens?
You'd have to either reduce expenditures or increase revenues to offset that loss.
I mean, you know, hypothetically, what's the, the largest, I mean, would be Lower Makefield.
That's correct.
And if they were to institute, I mean, I don't know, do we have any kind of figures on what we collect from residents that work in the township from Lower Makefield?
The last we looked at was about four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand.
How long does it take to create that type of earned income tax in a municipality? How long? So you have to develop that in some form, right? How long does it take to get that up and running?
I think what you're asking is how long would it be to generate that over time? And that would depend on economic development and businesses coming into it.
You know, I guess Phil, how long would it take for?
With the stroke of the. They have to pass an ordinance.
For Lower Makefield.
Oh, for Lower Makefield to enact that. Well, they would have to pass an ordinance or resolution adopting the earned income tax as part of their budget.
But then what, if they did that this year, which they're probably not, but if, if they did this, did do it this year, when would it affect us in a negative way and benefit them? I mean, when would they start?
I would say it'd probably be after the first quarter of twenty twenty one, twenty two, sorry, yeah. Because typically the large sums of money and revenues are realized on a quarterly basis with earned income tax.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the one thing on the budget that kind of scares me because it's, you know, years ago, we were probably one of the only municipalities that had earned income tax. But now, you know, a lot of them are catching on and we're losing money to these other townships because they're, I mean, when you think of it, it's their best way to derive income. And, and I mean, now that they're, you know, we've had what? Luckily, Middletown Township didn't go with a full, they went, they, they split it, but that's another big municipality that, that could hit us big. You know, I don't know what we, what we have with Ben Salem, but I mean, they're the biggest municipality in, in the county and these things could kill us. That's, that's why I've always said, you know, somewhat jokingly, but really truthfully, we need to entice business from New Jersey that has a hundred percent of the employees from New Jersey and we can reap the benefits of collecting earned income tax from out of state. Yeah. Michael, can I ask you another question? About the cable franchise, the television franchise?
Yeah.
That's probably going to go down at some point?
I would, I would imagine, yes. As more people cut the cord, I imagine that figure will drastically decrease, let alone the fact that Verizon has openly said that they'll be out of, out of the cable franchise industry in less than five years. So over time, I think that number will begin to dwindle.
Are you comfortable leaving it where it is now and not going in this year until we're negotiating that around time?
I'm comfortable leaving it where it is. It's just one of the, one of the lines in the revenue side that we'll just have to keep an eye on.
Right. Any other questions?
I don't have any, thanks.
I guess the only question, other question that I have is that we are going to have one new supervisor that's going to be taking office. Now, that particular supervisor has the right to request the budget to be open, correct?
I'll defer that question to Mr. Sanders.
Budget may be amended, budget may be amended during January after a municipal election and it's got to be adopted before February fifteenth of the following year. And I believe that you cannot revise upward in excess of ten percent in the aggregate of the budget or in excess of twenty five percent in the amount of any major category from that budget. But you've got to leave a period of ten days for public inspection and notice of that. So you've got to get it done probably before the end of January realistically. But yes, only month of January after municipal election, the board may amend the budget and the levy and tax rate to conform with its amended budget.
But that, I thought your question, Phil's question was about the triggering device. What triggers that review?
Well, that would be the request of the new board.
Yeah, yeah. To request that one member or the request?
No, 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 no. No, majority of the board has to want to amend the budget.
Okay, yeah. That's what I was misunderstanding. That's what I would think.
Well, no, I guess since it's not on the agenda, no motions can be made in regards to this budget tonight, correct?
That's correct, no motions can be made. A direction can be given. It's only on here for discussion purposes, so directions can be given, but you're not taking any official votes tonight.
Well, unless, unless the board.
Unless you amend.
Unless the board.
Unless you amend.
Again, I, I, I'm, the board, not a team to discuss, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, the nation's advocate, but still gives us a lot of time in regards to approving the budget. We still have, but I mean, I, I've heard no opposition to anything on this budget. And again, I, I've heard that the budget process should be pushed up and we should get it going, but then when I ask for discussion, I don't get any discussion. So can I make a motion or can I first get consensus of the board if they would like this, where we could prolong it until December 31st if we have to?
I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that if you want to move in that direction, that you first make or obtain a motion, and a second to amend the agenda to add a vote on advertising the budget as a step one. If that passes, we've got to, well, you have to state the reasons why for the minutes that that was not on the agenda and is now being, may be added to the agenda. And if that passes, then you can vote whether to advertise the budget.
Okay. So moved or what you said?
Motion would be to amend the budget to include consideration of a motion to advertise the proposed budget.
Is there a second?
Say again the motion?
Motion is to amend the agenda to add an item to consider amend, advertising the proposed budget.
Any second? Okay. Then put this on the agenda for next month and we'll have this discussion all over again.
I'll, I'll have some new questions, but...
They better be good news.
This was on Michael's, Michael's...
This is another, last year we did the same thing. We had a budget that had everything included and actually, we lessened the millage from 12 to 8, but we had to prolong it. We had to keep going until December. I, I think, what was the reason that this...
December 27th.
Did all this work into this budget ahead of time? Like I said, Lower Mayfield isn't doing this until November, which is how it used to be in the old days. But now, we have the opportunity to discuss this budget. I'm, I'm sorry, it's almost 10 o'clock. I remember being here till 12 o'clock sometimes discussing the budget, but the board discussed the budget. And we're only prolonging something, again, it's advertising the budget as is. You want to make changes, we can still make changes. But we have, what's the period of time for when we advertise it?
So it, it needs to be advertised for a minimum of 20 days before adoption?
When's our next meeting?
The 10th.
The 10th. Okay, so if we don't do it then, the next meeting will be the 23rd. So we're going to go into December.
December is...
And if there is no consensus then, we'll have our New Year's Eve party here. Because that's when it's going to have to be decided by December 31st.
Correct.
So next year, when you ask this board now to put a budget together ahead of time, in my opinion, you should be ashamed of yourself. Because you didn't accomplish anything.
We've got to move up from the 22nd of December to the December 8th, hopefully.
We'll see.
Well, in, in that case, you have to authorize advertisement at your next...
Yeah.
...meeting on, on November 10th because 20 days, although...
That's correct, Mr. Sander.
20, 20 days would allow you to enact it or adopt the budget on the 8th.
Correct.
Again, I'm, I'm assuming next meeting, I'm going to hear a lot of revisions to the budget because you're going to have another two weeks to think about it. Let's see, let's, let's see. I've been doing these budgets a long time, I just, I'm predicting, I'm predicting this is the equivalent to the prior agreement. It just keeps going on.
We're going to get the 240, $46,000 to put in there.
Amen, amen. All right, any new business?
Use mine up, so.
All right. I'll take the motion to adjourn. All right, now, now, objection here, Derek, for you. Thank you.